Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you to the February 29, 2024 Public Hearing of the City of Prescott Planning and Zoning Commission. If you could check your cell phones, make sure they're either off or on vibrate or something like that, would appreciate that. To start the meeting, I'm going to have the commission members introduce themselves. And Susan just really wanted to start this off this time, so I will let Susan go ahead and start it.
Good morning. I'm Susan Graham.
Good morning to all of you. I'm Tom Hutchison, and it's very nice to see you all here.
Good morning. I'm James Whiting.
Morning, Tom Riley.
Good morning, Tom Davis. Good to see you again.
Good morning, Jim Kloszuski.
This is an open public hearing and is being videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public and local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The numbers of commissioners present is seven and require a majority of those present to pass a motion. Members of the public when called upon are required to state their name and address for the record, so we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary. Also, would like to acknowledge council member in Gambogia, I believe Ted's here. There he is over there. And I'm not sure if we have other members in the council here or not. I don't see him right off the hand, okay? Next item on the agenda would be the approval of the December 14, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Yes, I have one question. I made a statement that I objected to the approval based on objective, directly observable data, and the word "objective" was left out. Objective means it's what I know. Subjective is what I think. Okay, so I'd like that word "objective" put back in in case there's some legal ramifications.
Okay. Any comments from the commission members? Is there a motion concerning the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as amended.
We have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, Sarah, what did you call?
Commissioner Riley.
Approve.
Commissioner Graham.
Abstained since I was absent.
Commissioner Whiting.
Approve.
Commissioner Davis.
Approve.
Commissioner Hutchison.
Approve.
Commissioner Kloszuski.
Approve.
Passes 6-0.
Okay. Next on the agenda is S I T E 23-015, Site Plan Review for Quick Trip Fueling Station and Convenience Store, zoning B R business resident, no, excuse me, regional. Location is A P N 112-05-058B, 2280 East State Route 69, Prescott, Arizona. Property owner, Sarti Properties Limited. Applicant is Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Kaylee.
Hello. Thank you, Don. Good morning, commissioners and chairman. My name is Kaylee Nunez. I am community planner. So I wanted to start this presentation just by noting that this review process was triggered by the city's water policy. So again, the reason you're seeing this is a function of the water policy. It is not a standalone site plan review. With that said, I did do a full analysis against the criteria for site plans in the Land Development Code. So here is an aerial map showing the subject parcel, which is just west of Lowe's, east of U-Haul. Here is a zoning map showing that it is in business regional zoning. And so business regional zoning in the Land Development Code is described as a high-intensity business district. It provides specific standards for the development of a large variety of business office or service uses. So what I did here is I overlaid the site plan that the applicant provided onto the aerial map, just to give you an idea of the scale and location of the store and the fuel Here is a close-up of the site plan. So you'll see that they will access via a right-in off Highway 69, and then the egress is to the northeast. That, I wish I had a laser pointer, but that drive to the northeast will connect to the Lowe's exit, which is Here's a landscaping plan. So they provided landscaping beyond what is required in the Land Development Code. And so here are some bullet points summarizing the project. The proposed store is 5,300 square feet. It will be the tan stucco with stone accents and the traditional Quick Trip signage. The fuel canopy will be about 7,200 square feet and designed to match the building. There will be eight double pumps, which will be capable of serving up to 16 automobiles at a time. So there will be enhanced landscaping to provide buffering to the north as well as reduce heat island effects in the summer. I also want to note, and we'll go back to it, there's a landscaping wall proposed on the north end. The store between three and four feet. The store will be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with approximately two to six employees on site at any given time. So the proposed site plan meets all required setbacks. The proposed site plan meets and exceeds required parking spaces. Again, the ingress will be taken via right only off Highway 69, egress to be taken via Lowe's entrance. So I applied eight relevant criteria from the Land Development Code. You know, there's a full summary in the staff report, but what I looked at was building lot and setback requirements, internal circulation, landscaping, screening and buffering, outdoor lighting standards, parking and maneuvering, residential protection standards, sign location, size and design, and traffic control and handling. So I won't read, you know, my analysis verbatim there, but they all met these criteria. All these criteria were met in the review. So and then the real in-depth site plan review will occur at time of building permitting. And so there is a motion. Of course, I am open for any questions. And we do have representative from Quick Trip here as well.
Before we go into having discussion with staff, I want to remind people, if you like to be heard, we have a method to do this. We do not allow shouting out questions, shouting out comments during the meeting. And I hope this is clear, okay? All right. Questions for Kaylee?
Kaylee, do we know the height of the building?
I have a question.
Right now, the commission goes first, asking questions of staff, of the applicant. We will open it up for the public to have questions at that time, okay?
Answer to that question is no, because this is a site plan review. We haven't received elevations yet. But of course, when, you know, permits are submitted for, those will, the building heights will be reviewed and need to be in conformance with the district standards.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Tom Davis, Kaylee, you know, we know that this was up as for a conditional use permit with the Board of Adjustment.
Yes.
And there was a discussion at that meeting about a road on the north side of the property.
Yes.
Is that part of the site plan review, or is that not part of the site plan review?
No, that hasn't precipitated exactly. So that's been a discussion between Quick Trip and the HOA. So we did not receive a revised site plan showing, you know, said access road. Right now, we're just going with the access as presented. And, you know, Daniel may be able to clarify more if you have more questions about how that negotiation's going.
Maybe later, you can explain that to the commission and the audience, okay? Also, regarding the site plan review, there's a large amount of property north of the site right there. It's a big lot. So the site plan review is final for the entire property?
Yes. So that's just showing, you know, the proposed development is only taking up, you know, a fraction of the parcel, and the rest will remain undisturbed, unless, of course, you know, they decide upon an access road between Holiday and Canyon Drive, so.
My concern is that, after reviewing everything a couple times, is that that buffer, that space, be preserved in some way?
Okay.
And is that under the purview of site plan review, or is that under the conditional use permit?
You can tie the approval to the site plan. So that way, you know, if they wanted to make any changes or develop out further, they'd have to come back to planning and zoning. You're welcome.
Other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to make a comment?
Good morning, chairman and commissioners. My name is Daniel Chambers. Excuse me. I work for Quick Trip Corporation, and I office out of 1116 East Broadway Road in Tempe, Arizona. I want to thank you guys for letting me speak here today. To address a couple of the things you guys have brought up, the building will be 22 feet tall. And then the road, the site plan that you guys have in front of you is not the, does not show the connection that we've been working with the HOA. We're bringing this plan in front of you because we only have so much contract time on our contract, and we're trying to, as we're continuing to negotiate in good faith with the HOA, we wanted to still be able to try to get an approvable site in case that we were able to come to terms or an agreement with the HOA. So that is the site plan that you see in front of you that does not involve the HOA and completely divest ourselves from them. I am cautiously optimistic that we will come to an agreement with the HOA, and we understand that we would have to bring that plan in front of you guys as well for your approval. As far as the property behind the site that you see here, we're okay if you guys add a condition that if we want to change or expand our facility, that we would have to come back in front of you guys for an additional vote. That is a condition that we're okay, because that's not our intent to do that. And so as a good faith and gesture, we're willing to let you guys add that as a stipulation without any protest from us.
Anything else you want to say, sir?
I'm here for any questions. If you guys want to talk about anything or have any questions about the plan or how we operate or what we're doing, so.
Questions for the applicant. Tom?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison here. This is a little off-topic.
Yeah.
But I hope you can answer it for me.
Okay.
Does fewer gas stations equal less competition and higher gas prices? Or the flip side of that, more gas stations equals more competition and less lower gas prices?
Generally speaking, the more you have of something, the more competition you have, that'll generally lower, that'll shift the economic curve to the right, which will lower the prices. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have several. Jim Kloszuski, the height of your building is 22 feet. What is typically the height of the canopies?
They are right about 21 feet as well, so.
The next question I have is, as I see from the site plan, as it sits on the lot, because I walked the lot, and I went down in the neighborhood, and I walked to see view corridors, there's utility lines that run slightly behind where it looks like you want to put the building. Are you, I'm talking about overhead wires. Is it your intention that everything is going to be south of those wires as far as construction, as opposed to going downhill where you get into a lot of fill and a lot of boulders?
Yeah, we don't, we want to try to keep the site as close to Highway 69 as we can for a couple reasons. One is just constructability of it, as you mentioned. The further you go down, it gets downhill. It's a lot more fill that brings, increases the cost, but also just to create more of a buffer between our operation and the neighborhood, so.
The next question I have is, I didn't get a chance to survey other gas stations with food marts. And I don't know if the food marts are open 24 hours, but we are not really a 24-hour community. Average age in Prescott is 59. 46% is 55 and older, and 29% is 65 and older. And my wife was a flight attendant for a number of years, and often I would go down to Phoenix to pick her up, and we'd drive down 69 to get home at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning, and it's pretty much dead. I'm just wondering if you feel that your business model is, necessitates a 24-hour for the food mart. I'm not sure that you may get enough traffic to justify your, you know, your expenses.
Great question, commissioner. So at this time, we do feel that it would be justified, but that's something we're always looking at operations, how we can operate the store better and make it more convenient or more appropriate for what's going on. So as of right now, the intent is to have it be 24, 24 hours.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. We're here to discuss the site plan, not the business operations. So I think that's a little bit outside the purview of this commission. If you're curious about that, you should probably engage them outside of this meeting.
Other questions?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison again. I had a whole list of thoughts, but one of them was, I didn't see any inclusion of an electric vehicle charging bank. Was that something you thought about or just overlooked or just disregarded?
No, that's, we're always continuously looking at what is the future, what is, what we're going to be able, how we're going to be able to operate, what restrictions and regulations are coming, what the market is doing. Currently, we are, we are looking at alternative fuels, and that would include electric vehicle charging stations. However, at this time, we don't have a market, feel that there's enough market demand for that. And that's something that is the, as the future changes and there becomes more EVs on the road, that that possibly could change, and that we'd be able to adapt our facility to accommodate that if needed. And, but right now, that is not something that we're pursuing, but we are looking at it vigilantly.
Being in our V, I wondered about motorhome clearance height.
Yes.
Can you accommodate?
It can. So the way that the lot is laid out, you'll see that the dimensions are typically larger than what most municipalities require in terms of width of drive aisles, and that's done very intentionally. It's set up for a fire truck to be able to run through the site and be able to run underneath the canopy in case of an emergency. So I do believe that an RV would be able to successfully navigate through the site without any issues.
I didn't see a propane filling station there either.
That's correct. There is no propane filling station. That's in an alternative fuel that we're looking at, but right now, that is not something that we include in our business model.
Was any consideration given to an RV dump site?
No, this is not intended to service RVs. I meant an RV certainly could come in there, but I don't think that they will. This is not a travel center. This is meant for just to capture the vehicles, cars, and not any over-the-road trucks or any larger cars like that. So there is no RV dump because of that.
My last one was, was vehicles with trailers or RVs parking. Is there any extended lengths? I didn't see anything that looked like a place you could park a longer vehicle.
No, you're correct. But then, there is two sides, and if there is some people with a trailer, in the past in other Quick Trips, they will park along the curb. And that's also part of the reason why, you'll notice that our dimensions are larger. So that way, if someone does park there, they're still adequate 24 feet of a drive width, of a drivable width. So if on the east and west side, there would be opportunities if someone did have a vehicle with a trailer to park there for a very short-term period. You're welcome.
Other questions for the applicant?
I have one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
On your three- or four-foot buffer wall that's proposed, have you considered maybe doing an eight-foot masonry wall to help serve as a better buffer for noise and so forth for the residents behind?
So that wall is a retaining wall. There is landscape on it. I have talked with the HOA about looking at putting some additional landscape back in there, but we're not extending the wall past what it is retaining. But we will look at adding and increasing the landscape to continue over further, if it will make sense and will create a buffer.
Other questions?
Susan Graham, there's a reference to the traffic control and handling, and I am a bit concerned with the site that you have. I would imagine a lot of the people utilizing this station would be headed into Prescott, and I'm concerned about that making it difficult for people to get out of the subdivision.
So when we did this initially, to give you guys a little history, we did, before we ever made application to the city, we did go up and we did talk with the HOA. We did talk about trying to work with them on coming to an agreement on being able to utilize Prescott Canyon Drive. At that time, we were not able to come to an agreement. So then we went back, and we went to ADOT and worked with ADOT to come up with the site plan that you see in front of you that divested ourselves from the HOA. So we have a full traffic study that we've done and worked with ADOT and gone through their approval process to ensure that what we have here will not impact Prescott Canyon Drive. So we have our own deceleration lane, and then we have, we also added, you can see some curb in there to start the deceleration lane for Prescott Canyon Drive as well, too, that we will be building if we move forward with this layout.
Other questions? I have one.
Yes, sir.
Your overhead lighting throughout the property.
Yes.
Will it be maintained within the site plan and not extending beyond the site plan?
Correct. So we will do a photometric. We do a photometric, whether it's required by the municipality or not. And we've also been asked by the HOA, and regardless if we come to an agreement with them or not, we are still going to add a shielding on the back of the LED lights. So we run full cutoff LED lights so that there isn't bleed over, but we'll put a shield on the back of the light, on the lights that are adjacent to the neighborhood, regardless of what our agreement is with them or not. We're going to, we will self-stipulate that. I don't know how to say that, but we'll, we'll, we'll put that on there, and you guys can put that on the record. It's on the record now, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Some down the road there. Going to open it up for the public here. Now, we're, Sarah will call out the person's name to come up to speak. And we're using a three-minute limit or is it four?
Three.
Three. Each participant from the public will have up to three minutes. And the reason we do this, we want to allow as many people as possible to have their opportunity to make their statements. If you get near that timeframe, you will be notified of it, okay? Sarah, call the first one, please.
Karen Monks.
Good morning. My name is Karen Monks, and I'm the president of the Prescott Canyon Estates HOA. My address is 2179 Hillside Loop Road in Prescott. We live, we have a quiet senior community just north of the proposed Quick Trip site with 255 manufactured homes, 400 residents, and 35 acres of creeks, wildlife, and abundant foliage. The site plan purportedly meets Prescott's requirements, but it doesn't provide context to you. Quick Trip would represent that the additional noise and traffic impacts are expected to be negligible because the site is next to a busy highway, but removing the vegetation, rock, and soil between our community and Highway 69 to a level of five feet above Highway 69, which involves a lot of grinding or blasting of stone, will increase the noise in our community. It isn't possible for the over 500 vehicles a day that they predict through the site to not, 24 hours a day, without creating even more noise. Our homes are only 300 feet away from this site. The proposed gas station driveway is only 130 feet east of the only ingress and egress from our community. This additional traffic will make it harder to access our community, and it will increase the risk of harm and possibly death. The traffic will impede emergency vehicles in any emergency evacuation that happens. The situation will be even worse when ADOT expands, as they are planning to do, Highway 69 to add additional lanes, and also to put a divider down the middle of the road, so we will no longer be able to make a left-hand turn into our community when we're coming from Prescott. We will have to go down to Holiday Drive and make an unprotected left-hand U-turn to get into our community. Already, it will be difficult because of the fact that there'll be oncoming traffic and traffic coming from Lowe's, but it will get much worse when we have those additional vehicles coming in and out from the gas station. Due to the height of the proposed gas station site above most of our homes, which you can't see from the drawings and the pictures that have been given to you, but as Mr. Kloszuski can tell, since he walked the lot, it drops down precipitously behind where the building site is going to be. And so consequently, even with shielded lights, our community is going to be seeing all of those additional lights, seven by...
30 seconds.
The site plan shows that the plants and the walls will... The site plan shows that the plants and the walls will shield our community, but in fact, if you look at it, only half of it is shielded with plants. The parallel lines that are near the top are a drop down into our community. So all of the pumps and everything will be easily viewable from our site. So we ask you today to please not approve this site plan, not to go through with this water agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Lori Bryant.
Good morning. My name is Lori Bryant. I live at 2347 River Trail Road in Prescott Canyon Estates, which puts me right in the front row and back of the QuickTrip proposed property. I moved to Arizona in 2013 with my husband. We absolutely love it here. We were glad to live in an HOA that looks out for our best interest and safety. PCE is an over 55 senior community. Most residents are between 65 and 92. It is a peaceful, quiet environment. At night, you can hear a pin drop. Most residents are in bed between 8:00 and 9:00 PM. If QuickTrip is allowed to put in their gas station, all that peace and tranquility goes away. There will be nothing but noise pollution, not only from all the vehicles going in and out of the station, but from all the big rigs that will not only be delivering food, fuel, but foods, beverages, and any other necessities that QuickTrip requires to run their convenience store. And this can be any time of day or night. In addition, there will be also a considerable light exposure, and let's not forget the possibility of homeless people hanging around day or night, especially if the store is open for 24 hours. I was in Phoenix over the weekend and passed a couple of QuickTrips. They were both in commercial strip malls, and there was a double rigged food truck making a delivery at 10 o'clock PM. My question for QuickTrip is why build in front of a senior residential community? There are three gas stations within two miles of PCE and all have convenience stores. I respectfully ask the commission to seriously consider the fact that this will totally impact our peace, quiet, safety, and our present way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Acacia Koah.
Acacia Koah is my name. I live at 2499 Hilltop Road in Prescott Canyon Estates since June of 2003, which is nearly 21 years, and one year before Lowe's, four houses from the back of the Lowe's building. That building and parking lot were constructed over 12 active aquifers. The results were a sinking building and parking lot several times. Each incident meant heavy equipment and jackhammers were used to fix those problems. In the process of trying to fill those aquifers and prepare the land, there were several months of heavy equipment and backup beeping from a dozen vehicles, seven days a week, 12 hours a day. When I asked the foreman for a day, one day of peace and quiet, he laughed at me and said the city had given them carte blanche to do whatever they did in order to get the job done. QuickTrip will repeat this assault. During Lowe's construction, they broke the water line, the gas line, and the power line. PCE is in the county, and we use city utilities. Imagine the inconvenience and disruption of those basic services. QuickTrip could cause these disruptions also. The traffic and accidents have increased exponentially in the last 21 years. When an accident occurs at or near Holiday Drive, we lose access to the entrance to PCE Drive for hours. Only once during PCE opened, during, once have PCE opened the back gate, which is usually locked and chained. One Christmas Eve, a few years ago, there was a fatal accident at Holiday Drive, and I was forced to sit in a freezing car for hours waiting for access to get home. The 69 was closed from the Lamb dealership to the Frontier Village. This is a common closure with accidents on 69. QuickTrip will exacerbate this issue. Once Lowe's was built, PCE experienced two murders and several robberies. Having a QuickTrip in that location will, will encourage any number of negative situations with it being open 24/7. Constant lights, noise, the smell of gas and diesel with the prevailing winds, nonstop traffic, and violence. These places are magnets for the homelessness. In order for the gas station to be located in that piece of land dynamiting or heavy equipment will be required to penetrate the mountain of solid granite. This will be 10 times worse than what Lowe's had to do.
30 seconds.
Just one incident of dynamite caused the front of my house to shift, and I couldn't lock my front door for two weeks until it was fixed. Imagine going to bed each night and not feeling safe and secure. With QuickTrip dynamiting that place or houses, excuse me, houses will shift and lawsuits will ensue. Because of all these issues, I'm strongly requesting a no vote, or if then, a very strong recommendation for a 12-foot-high wall at the back of the property for the noise abatement against the eye and ear sore. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next?
Patricia Hamm.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Patricia Hamm, and I live at 2493 Hilltop Road. I am on the hill, two doors away from Lowe's parking lot. We already suffer a great amount of noise from Lowe's, but at least they close at 10:00 PM. And other than the street sweeper late at night on Thursdays and Sunday nights, it gets, you know, fairly quiet after, after 10:00 PM, other than those two nights. As you all know, sleep deprivation is a proven form of torture. They use it on prisoners of war and so forth. I just can't even imagine what it's going to be like with a 24/7 business there. I'm not naive enough to think that nothing will ever go there. We realize Mr. Sardi has the right to sell his property. If I owned it, I'd want to sell it and make my money, too. But there's got to be a better use for that piece of property, something that closes at a reasonable hour between 6:00 and 10:00 PM at least, so that we can have the peace and quiet to sleep. You're, almost all of you are about my age. It's hard enough to sleep at this age without being woke up several times in the evening, in the nighttime, trying to get your rest. So I would request that any other use but a 24/7, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Next?
Jeffrey Gibbons.
Good morning, commission and residents. My name is Jeff Gibbons. My address is 811 Wildflower Court in Prescott Canyon Estates. I am here to speak in opposition to the proposed QuickTrip gas and convenience store. This so-called convenience, convenience, I believe, comes with many unwanted costs and losses. The costs will include, as we have mentioned, increased noise, light, traffic, air, and even possible soil pollution, to name a few. QuickTrip may be good stewards of their properties, not questioning that. But as for the patrons stopping for gas, quick gas and grub and go, these concerns don't even enter their radar. The project poses storage leaks, perhaps with gas, gas spillage, surface runoff into our adjoining property, and it could threaten our simple but really irreplaceable creek and wildlife habitat. If approved, a mere 100 feet will be the only buffer left to us to protect our immediate living environment and our own precious health and well-being. I disagree with QuickTrip. This is an essential need for this. We have these same businesses all along the 69 corridor. A QuickTrip itself was just approved in Prescott Valley. That's not far down the road. In our increasingly busy 69 thoroughfare, we are in no way, folks, a gasoline or a convenience store desert. The economic gains that the property owner and applicant may realize is valid, I agree. But we ask that our board consider a community's longstanding appreciation and of, and also our definition of value of this simple rugged property. Most of us relocated there, as mentioned a few times, for openness, panoramas, cleaner air, et cetera, camaraderie. All told, I believe that's lived up to it. It's been fostered. I believe that a 24/7, 365, QuickTrip would only serve to undermine these longstanding qualities. The Sardis will be able to sell and walk away. We, the residents, will live with the impacts of this into perpetuity.
30 seconds.
Finally, I'm not asking nor expecting any of us to be tree huggers, but simply to question and to consider whether this project's overall impact and value, and to help us all to embrace perhaps a better use of our open space. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Dennis Anton.
Hi, I'm Dennis Anton. I live in Prescott Canyon Estates at 2254 Hillside Loop Road. Last month, I believe it was Kaylee that read a criteria that you need to consider, one of which, impact on the nearby residents. Prescott Canyon Estates is the only community affected by this, no one else. We plead that you turn them down. Let them find another location. I, firstly, I don't know if the space between Lowe's and Prescott Canyon, Prescott Lakes Parkway is reservation land or not, but if it's available to them, they should consider an alternate location. Please, don't let them destroy what we are basically retired, and we love it there. And that will definitely impact our peace of mind and way of life and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Lee McKenzie.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for letting me speak. Obviously, emotions are running high, as you can tell. My name is Lee McKenzie. I live at 2353 Canyon Court in Prescott Canyon Estates. I invested my life savings in this community. One of the things that concerns me, having lived in many major metropolitan areas, as I'm sure most of you have, is the knowledge that a business of this nature doesn't always attract the most salubrious of clientele. We are already noticing evidence of homeless camps and various vagrants in the area. A business of this nature attracts those kinds of people and seriously threatens our safety and our security. We are a very vulnerable community. And the 24/7 operation, to Mr. Klosowski's point, seems, A, unnecessary because you could shoot a cannon down 69 at 2:00 in the morning, and I promise you, you would not hit anyone. But that's when all of the bad guys seem to come out and find their way around various places. A three to four foot buffer wall is not going to do anything to protect us. And like most people, I understand, you know, progress, but I don't view this particular, the nature of this business as progress. Unfortunately, I view it as threatening and completely unnecessary in light of all the other many marks that we already have in the, in the area. I would respectfully request that you deny this request to, or this permit, whatever you want to call it, and allow us to maintain and preserve the safety and security of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next?
Michael Calder.
Thank you. My name is Michael Calder. I live at 853 Wildflower Drive in Prescott Canyon Estates. I support the idea that this is an unsuitable location for a QuickTrip, perhaps some other usage maybe. But in particular, I'm concerned about the location being so close to a residential area. As it happens, I have a background in chemistry, including organic chemistry, and I can introduce a couple of words which are not commonly heard in this, this chamber. Toluene, benzene, naphthalene, and a whole list, long list, of carcinogens, known carcinogens that are in everyday gasoline. And if you don't know this, I'll tell you. I was talking to somebody that installs gasoline stations for a living, and he told me, 100% of gasoline stations leak gasoline 100% of the time. It's just a matter of degree, and over time, that's why you see them having to periodically dig up these gas tanks and replace them. It's not the gas tanks themselves that leak, it's the gasket material. There is no flexible gasket material that is impervious to dissolution by gasoline. That's just a fact. There will be carcinogens, there will be leakages, both liquid in the ground and in the air. If you've ever been to a gas station and noticed those vents on the ground, those are venting gasoline fumes, including all of these carcinogens. Within the residential area, you will be able to smell gas. I guarantee that. Will it get into the groundwater? There's a good chance it will. There's no real buffer zone distance wise from the gas station to the residential area. I don't think carcinogens in our air, in our water, that close is a good idea. I, I vote to have this disqualified as a site for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Patricia Matthews.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Matthews. I live with my husband Roger at 775 Prescott Canyon Drive. And unfortunately, we are the first house behind this proposed QuickTrip. We are the ones who are going to suffer the most, but I speak from my heart for my husband and I, and for our community. We have a peaceful, tranquil place to live. I feel my health, my safety, my well-being are being threatened by this proposed gas station in front of my house. If you have not been to the Prescott Canyon Estate property, and you have not viewed how close they are proposing to put this to homes, not only mine, but my neighbors here, they are also all affected by this. And I just don't think that it is morally right for you to consider putting this kind of a business in, in front of a residential development. We will have fumes and noise and lights. Our health, safety, well-being, everything is going to be threatened. We don't need a four foot wall, an eight foot wall. We need a cyclone fence or whatever so that people cannot get near our property. I ask you, in all good conscience, to please not allow this gas station to be built where they are proposing to build it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next?
Tony Perry.
Good morning. I'm Tony Perry, and I live at 2242 Prescott Canyon Circle. And I just want to say that I appreciate that this commission maintains control of new development and takes into account the, the people and the, and the community that's already in this location and how we're all going to be affected. And so we appeal to you to, you know, listen to our concerns today. Everyone has already mentioned the 24/7 noise and lights and fumes and traffic. I worked for a transportation commission, and it was a known fact that you add cars to a situation, you're going to add accidents because people are going to have human error and miscalculate distances and speeds. This could potentially hinder us from being able to get in and out of our community if this happens right in our vicinity. Some people could be coming out of this and not, and looking towards Lowe's, but not looking who is coming out of our driveway. So that poses other issues as well. But, you know, and it, and it does diminish the quiet- quiet country setting of our place, but I think even more important is it diminishes our home values, because I personally would not buy a home with a 24/7 gas station and QuickTrip in front of my house. And that's kind of what's being proposed. Personally, these homes, for a lot of us, are our source of revenue. And when it gets to a point where we can't live there anymore and take care of ourselves, we're depending on our home values to be good so that we can sell and take care of ourselves. I'm concerned that this project is going to diminish the value of our homes and deter people from wanting to buy into Prescott Canyon Estates. And it's been mentioned about the dynamiting. I know when they were working on the shoulder, every single night, you could hear the pounding, the blasting, all this stuff going on. This would increase even more with the size of the project itself. I just don't understand why they need another gas station that's going to be like Costco two miles down. But I just would appeal that, that you take into consideration our senior community of 250 homes as a priority over this business. And this type of a project could be located someplace else where there's not a close proximity of homes and those of us that are going to be affected. We love Prescott, and we count on you to keep us in a nice community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
No more cards.
Okay. Would the applicant want to make any final comments? You don't have to, I'm just offering the opportunity.
Thank you. We appreciate the comments that we've heard. We've tried to take as many, as due consideration as we can with the site layout and the design, and try to mitigate what we can. That's why initially, we did reach out to the HOA to work with them on the drive, to provide them another access to Holiday, because Prescott Canyon Drive currently is a right-in, right-out only now. Lefts are not allowed in there currently, and they are correct when ADOT puts a median in there, it'll bound it. So hopefully, we can come to a resolution, because I think that would make it a little bit better to have two access points to the community versus one, as far as the runoff and stuff goes. And the leaking fuel tanks, that's something QuickTrip takes very seriously, in that we put a lot of effort into the design so that we don't have that. If you can go on the EPA, and you're not going to find QuickTrips on that list of leaking gas tanks, because we do things a lot differently than industry. We try to do, everything is double-walled, everything is rigid-piped, just to ensure that, because we don't want that. We're not here to poison any neighbors or cause any ill effects to them. Ultimately, we hope that they would be our customers. Some might choose not to be if we get to move forward, some might, so hopefully, we can work together with them and hopefully come to a good resolution with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant. Several discussions about, several discussions about the screening, and there is, on the, on the staff report paperwork and construction exhibits that we've got, there's a reference to a landscape wall. It's a detail. I'll try to find the place for it.
It should be sheet LS1, I think illustrates that.
Yeah, correct. So, I can't find it at this time. Anyway, my, my point is, can you point out where the six?
Can you speak a little louder, Tom? Can you speak a little louder?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
You have to push on the button while you speak, I think, continuously.
I, I'm doing my best, Chair.
Okay.
Councilmember Davis, I think you're asking for me to point out where that, that landscape, that retaining wall is, and that is used to retain. So if you look at the site plan up there or in the corner, it's those diagonal lines that, that go across the, the creek channel there, there'll be a culvert box that the road goes over, that we have to cross the creek there. And that was intended to help with the grade transition and everything. And so, we don't have trees there, because you don't want to put trees over a retaining wall, because those root systems will get in the wall, and that'll cause premature failure. But we did have a lot of shrubs and landscape put over there. And as I mentioned before, that the HOA asked that we look at putting potentially some trees behind that, and if, if the trees will make an impact, that is something that we will do, and we will add additional landscape back there.
Right. And I, I understand that, but the figure F6, landscape screen wall detail, it says three to maximum four feet, that, it doesn't say it's a retaining wall, it says a landscape screen wall.
I think it's just how it's labeled. It's intended to be a retaining wall, and I think that's caused some confusion, so I would apologize for that, not catching that on the plans. It should be labeled a retaining wall.
Okay, so is there, is there, is there an opportunity to put this wall in addition, and I'll talk about the retaining wall on the upper right-hand corner of the exhibit, I'm talking about all the way across the back of the, where, where you have the landscape buffer?
That's why we did the, the heavy landscaping. We want to do the landscaping, we found that absorbs more sound, and absorbs more just with the organic landscaping materials. So we want to continue with that landscape and do, and do a heavy landscape buffer in
I have, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Can you remind me, how close is the closest house?
I believe it's 350 feet.
It's a football field.
It's about, yeah, it's, so that, I wanted to bring that up. The distance from the northern bound of the site plan to the southern boundary of Prescott Canyon Estates is over 300 feet. And I did verify that on RGIS last night. Again, wish I had a laser pointer. So, so that means then, to the next closest home, if we're measuring to structure, it's probably, you know, guess, another 40, 50 feet.
Other questions?
While I'm speaking, I also just wanted to reemphasize, so the difference between this process and the conditional use permit, so with the site plan, we're not evaluating the off-site impacts like we are with the CUP. So I just wanted to make that clear, we're, this is a hearing to evaluate the functionality of the site plan, and even then, so the only reason we're seeing this is because of the water policy. So ju, just wanted to make that clear. A lot of good input here, but I want to make sure you know that they're different processes.
And just for the record, Karen believes that it's 305 feet. I recall 352, but it is, it is in, somewhere around that distance, 300-plus feet, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Before we move on to the potential motion, is there, any commission member wants to make any comments? Tom?
Well, not so much a comment, but I do have some questions for staff that came up through the discussion, listening to everybody. First of all, does the BR zoning allow a 24/7 operation?
Yes, there are, in the zoning code, there are no stipulations about hours of operation. Basically, the market will dictate it. We just don't have a lot of those businesses in Prescott. And if we were to apply a stipulation to that, that would be more of a function of the conditional use permit.
That's what I thought also.
Yeah.
What does the general plan, the current general plan, say about this particular?
Commercial. So it's, it's in line with the general plan, the land use map. And again, it is also within a commercial corridor overlay.
Okay, thank you.
This property.
Anything else, Kaylee?
No, actually, I made note here too, I, you know, I heard a few comments about raising the height of the walls. So the maximum wall height in business regional is six feet, so anything beyond that would need a variance, which is through the Board of Adjustment.
Okay. Councilmember Gambogi, did you like to make a comment? And no, he has not been drafted into the professional baseball league.
But the name on the back dates me. Ted Gambogi, 1896 Forest View. I'd like to direct my comments to the audience. Before I was on city council, I was on the planning commission saw, for a number of years. So I have seen a lot of residents come to object a proposal, but I wanted to compliment you. You're the most courteous, logical group that I've seen, so I just wanted to thank
And before we conclude up here, I also want to thank you for your patience and for your input. We look for input. Now, we may not always agree with you, but we want your input on this, and this is the reason we have the forum for the public to be able to talk to the commission members on that. Any other comments from commission members?
James Whiting. One of the things that I found difficult in picturing what this is going to look like from the resident's perspective is that there's no elevations. And I'm looking at the site, the site is quite a challenging site to develop. Having been a contractor most of my life, I can really appreciate that. And it, it's really difficult to see how that building would look from their perspective. It's not like it's a flat piece of ground, and you can say, okay, I'm looking straight at it. So I, I don't know whether I can approve this without having a better perspective of it. I, I understand that it meets the requirement for preliminary site approval, is what we're looking for here. But from the resident's standpoint, and, and my own standpoint, it's, it's hard to visualize what this would look like once you cut down probably 10 feet off the top and terrace that down into the back. So I don't know. I'm just offering that as a comment.
Any other comments?
I'm, I'm sorry, Jim. Mr. Chairman, I have maybe a couple of questions for the staff. Can you clarify for us the process here? This is a site plan review, and it also is pending for the Board of Adjustments for the conditional use permit. The site plan review recommendation from the planning commission goes to the city council?
Yeah, it will, so, you know, if it was approved today, it goes to Water Issue Subcommittee, which meets once a month, and then will go to city council for approval. And again, it's basically a means to carry this project through for water approval. Though we do, you know, we do look at it from, for functionality. Again, the reason you're seeing this is because of the water policy passed two years ago. And then the conditional, so Board of Adjustment, the last meeting got deferred, pending, you know, more discussions between QuickTrip and the HOA, and we will be seeing them back at Board of Adjustment on March 15th, I believe. March 21st? Thought it was the third week of, the third Thursday.
Yeah, the 21st would be the third Thursday, that's what I have on my calendar.
Okay. So the third Thursday in March, we'll be seeing it at Board of Adjustment again.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Jim Kloszuski. Question I think I have for you, sir, is the landscaping is proposed. Landscaping takes a long time, years to develop. Are we talking about box trees, 24-inch, 36-inch box trees? In addition to that, my own observation, my own feeling is, I'm not comfortable with the site plan unless we would actually have a buffer wall in addition to the wall that we're talking about, which would be a maximum, I guess, of six feet as a way to help eliminate or at least mitigate some of the issues regarding safety and noise.
Yeah, so it's a good question. So that's something we've been talking with the HOA about, is putting in a little bit more mature trees, larger sizes. You mentioned the 36-inch plus-size box trees, so that they're established day one, and that they're already full and at a closer to a more mature height from day one, so they don't have to grow for years. They will still continue to grow, but they'll be a lot larger. So that's something that we'd already been in discussions with, and we'll make sure that it gets added on to the landscape plan and called out that way.
So is QuickTrip opposed to putting up a six-foot buffer wall to mitigate noise, delivery noise, and other issues that may result behind the building itself?
I think it's something that we can look at. There's going to be some challenges with some of the grades and crossing the culvert and everything, and I think as long as staff has ultimate approval of what that wall looks like, that's something that we can consider.
Anybody else? Would a commission member like to make a motion?
Somebody's got to do it. I'm going to make a motion, make a comment first. There's going to be all kinds of development everywhere, and people who live adjacent to those developments, we have seen time and time again, generally tend to oppose those developments. This location along the highway is a very good location for this kind of a use. There's no question about that. As far as the site plan is concerned, one of the things that I was, felt a little bit comforting was the fact that the applicant is open to having the remainder of the site between them and the community that lives there remain open space, and, and I like that. I think that that's important. So I'm going to make a motion to approve SITE 23-015, per the site plan permitted, with the provision to preserve undisturbed portion of the property south, north of the developed site.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second? Any further discussion?
Can we add a six-foot buffer wall to that proposal?
I'd be open to having that amended, the motion amended.
I feel like that would be more appropriate for the CUP.
I, I would agree, but I think that, you know, that that is part of the site plan review, and I think that we can probably put that in here. The CUP will make their own decision, as will the city council.
Yeah, no, we're, we're okay with that. So you would just have to add on to the motion, per the site plan submitted, and require a six-foot retaining wall on the north side.
And I accepted that amendment to my motion.
And was there, was the person who seconded?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay.
I totally agree with that. That's what I would be looking for also.
All right, no other discussion? Sarah, would you call?
Commissioner Riley.
Approve.
Commissioner Graham.
Disapprove. I'm very concerned about the increase in traffic, making it difficult for the residents to get out of the subdivision. I'm also concerned about it being open 24/7 and the type of clientele it would attract. My preference would be to delay a decision on it until after the Board of Trustees meets on it, or Board of Adjustments meets on it.
So are you approving or disapprove?
Commissioner Whiting.
I'm going to approve.
Commissioner Davis.
Approve.
Commissioner Hutchison.
I approve.
Commissioner Kloszuski.
Approve.
Passes 6-1. I'm sorry, Commissioner Michaelman.
We're going to have a peer review after this, okay? I approve.
6-1.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chair, in closing regarding, it's just that the, the uses, I think there's a little bit of a gray area confusion regarding the use permit versus the site plan review, and I think that's, should be noted, and our decision here is related to the site plan review, and there is more discussion to be had regarding the use under the conditional use permit.
In a closing, we may not always vote the way you'd like to have us vote, but we do appreciate you taking your time and your effort to express your thoughts to us. You know, this is what we need to have. Even though we may not agree, this is what we need to have. need to have. Okay? Any staff updates?
I do not have any updates. George? No staff updates.
Okay.
Pardon me, just for the, the rest of the commissioners and the staff, I, I have a pending conflict with the next meeting.
Okay.
Be the first, first meeting in April, correct? And so, I just want to let everybody know that there may be a, if there's a quorum issue, I may not be able to attend.
Okay. We appreciate you letting us know in advance. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, both of you and Mr., and Commissioner Hutchison are representing the Planning and Zoning Commission on the General Plan Committee. And although we're not agended for that at this time, I would like to know whether or not, at the next meeting, that we can agendize an update from either or both of you regarding the progress being made in the general plan.
Yeah, that's, that's possible. And Tammy, you know, the other community planner, Tammy, is spearheading the general plan process. So, if she were here today, I'm sure she'd have an update on the general plan. But we can absolutely talk about that next time.
Good. We'll put it on the agenda then, okay?
Okay.
We are adjourned.